Simply ask that everybody keep the firefighters, the first responders that have to be on scene for that horrific wreck this morning, give you their thoughts and prayers, especially for the families and loved ones of the citizens who were there.
To some citizens that perished down there and the third that's fighting for their lives, that was there, apply to the advocate, just keep them in their prayers. Dear Lord, we do all things in your name, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counsel, we've had time to review the minutes from the March 11th, 2021 regular meeting. Are there any additions or deletions? Seeing none, hearing none, the minutes are approved by acclamation. We'll move on to item three, public hearings. Consideration of our request to close Sparrow Lane Alley between Country Club Road and Greystone Way. Pat Collins, our city engineer, will present. Hello, Pat.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Teresa, if you could put page seven up, that might just be helpful to let them see page seven on the packet. Okay, so the engineering department received a petition requesting that Sparrow Lane between Country Club Road and Greystone Way be closed. This is the area that's over there where Friends is near Summit Point. Anyway, the initial request was received on February 11th, and we've been working with the applicant, which is Mr. John Sineth, who is also here this evening if you have any questions. The proposed closure is being made to combine the vacant commercial development parcel to be developed by Mr. Sineth along with the right-of-way of Sparrow Lane. I want you all to keep in mind that when you vacate a right-of-way, there's no strings attached as far as you're vacating the right-of-way without any plan in mind, future plan in mind. So something else could totally come up. We haven't gone through that process yet. Okay? All the existing utility providers in the city departments have reviewed the matter, and none of us have objection with it. Atlanta Gas pointed out that they have an inch and a quarter plastic service gas line that serves Friends Restaurant. It's on the south half or on the Summit Point side of the alley, runs about 510 feet. The street closure petition, again, was circulated to all, as per the ordinance, to all of the property owners. Two of the parcels are held in an investment group. The individual Summit Point has individual condos, and then the parcel itself, you can see the parcel ID numbers on here, so that light yellowed area there are in, like I said, they're in a corporation. So the petition was circulated, and he got all the appropriate signatures for both the association and he got the signatures for the two additional parcels along Noble Way, one being himself and the other being where the State Farm building is. The third one, originally, we didn't have the ballet school, but she has since contacted me and said she supports the petition. So basically, you have five signatures that are required, and you have all five signatures in this packet. So we're recommending that you approve the closure with the condition that the Atlanta gas line either be provided some type of anisement or relocated. They're fine with also relocating it. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Counsel, any questions for Pat? Hearing none, would anybody like to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none, would anybody like to speak in opposition of this request? Counsel, I'll throw it to you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Counsel, thank you. Move on to item four, ordinances and resolutions. Consideration of a request from the Valdosta-Lounge County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration as part of coronavirus response. Mark Barber, our city manager, will present.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor just stated, this is some funding that's available for airports throughout the United States as a response to the coronavirus and to help mitigate any kind of negative effects that airports have suffered. And this particular grant, this is for the concessionary area in larger airports. That would be like for restaurants, gift shops, those type of things. But for us here in Valdosta, it's pretty much the rental car agencies that are out there. So the allocation for the regional airport was $9,462, and again, that will be used to help the rental car agencies at our airport to offset some of the negativity from the virus. I'd be happy to answer any questions. There is no match from the city, nor is there a match for the airport.
Counsel, any questions for Mark?
How many car agencies out there?
Chief.
No further questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you, unanimous? Mark, stay put. Item B, consideration of a request for the Valdosta-Lounge County Airport Authority to approve a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Federal Aviation Administration again and again coronavirus response.
Thank you once again, Mayor Matheson. Again, very similar to what you just approved. However, in this case, this is for operations of the airport. It's to help with cleaning, sanitation, custodial supplies, any type of operational needs in that manner that the airport feels that is needed. Again, our airport's allocation was $1,015,009, and again, no city match, no airport match. But this is, like I said, the first, the difference between the first one, that was for concessionary funding. This is funding for airport operations. Be happy to answer any questions.
That somebody be happy to make a motion on that billion dollars.
And I'll also add this, you know, we have to do this because we administer the grant, so we're just seeking approval from council to allow Mayor Matheson to sign the resolution. Because I will add that they would like us to move expeditiously with this process.
Go back to that amount, Mr. Reese, please.
Any further questions for Mark? Motion?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve this request as presented.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, unanimous, thank you. Mark, thank you. Item five, bids, contracts, agreements, and expenditures. A consideration of bids for resurfacing of streets in the city of Valdosta through the Georgia Department of Transportation, L-MIG program. Pat Collins.
Right. So on this item, we put out for bid the list of streets that we had circulated to all earlier, and based on that, we got in bids, and the bid sheets included here, we had two bids from our local pavers, from Scruggs and Reams, and the low bid was with Scruggs Company, the amount of $1,069,393.57, with 10% contingency for unexpected circumstances. We're asking you tonight to approve the L-MIG for 2021 for $1,176,332.93. I'll take any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Pat?
It's 5.3.
Any further questions?
5.12, I'm sorry. I was going by my memory.
Quit rounding things up.
It's failing.
Any other questions?
That's a lot of money for five miles. It's amazing.
Mr. Mayor, without objection, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, show of hands. Unanimous again, thank you, counsel. Item B, consideration of bids for the South Lee Street Pedestrian Improvement Project. Pat Collins again.
Okay, this project was approved for our SPOS 8, and it's a design build to run sidewalk between Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Griffin Avenue. It will be built, it will both be designed and built by the contractor. As you recall, on this specific area, there's already curb and gutter, and there's, you know, and it's piped and all that kind of stuff, so we just got to lay the sidewalk on grade. So we took our bids, we had two bidders, we had Southland and Standard Contractors, and the low bid was submitted by Standard Contractors in the amount of $139,482. We added 10% contingency for a total amount of $153,430.20, and that's what we were recommending that you approve this evening.
Counsel, any questions for Pat? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we approve the contract with Standard Contractors in the amount of $139,482, with a 10% contingency of $13,948.20.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands. Counsel, thank you. Pat, consideration of bids for traffic cabinets for the engineering department.
Okay, every year, we must restock our cabinets, and as you know, we have traffic accidents, we have lightning strikes, we have things that come in and cause us to have to replace them. And unfortunately, Amazon or Kmart's not carrying them yet, so. So it was, again, it was the SPOS 8 improvement that was in our budget for this year. We put out bids, we got bids back from four companies, Southern Lighting Control Technologies, Temple, and Utilocom Supply, and we're recommending that we purchase the four traffic cabinets from Southern Lighting in the amount of $43,000.
Counsel, any questions for Pat on that? I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to accept the bid as presented. Second.
Got a second, all in favor, show of hands. Pat, you sure you don't want to add in those two signs that that truck laid down today? Magnolia and Patterson, they took them out. All right, item D, consideration of a new lease agreement with Motorola for the in-car video systems for our VPD. Chief Leslie Mannahan, how are you doing?
I'm good. How are y'all?
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm bringing forward tonight a consideration for you all to let us enter an agreement with Motorola for an in-car video system. The actual system is WatchGuard 4RE. It's a five-year lease agreement, and currently, the in-car camera systems that we have are under a five-year lease agreement that started in 2014, so it expired in 2019, so what we have now is no longer under warranty, and it's not, when they don't function, we can't replace them. So we're asking to enter into a new agreement with Motorola, and the reason we've chose WatchGuard is our officers have tried it out, and it's very user-friendly, and it does everything they need it to do. Also, our in-car body cameras are also Motorola, so what this is going to be able to do is be able to, so we can combine everything that we need. Part of the lease agreement is going to be 115 in-car cameras. This is the actual, they're going to be taking our old camera systems out, putting the new camera systems in. We have a five-year warranty on this. Motorola is working with this, they're going to defer the first payment because this was actually, $600,000 was approved in SPOS 8. For fiscal year 2023, we're going to have a $300,000 payment, and fiscal year 2024, we'll have a $300,000 payment for the total of $600,000. But that will cover us for five years. So we're just asking that you give us the permission to move ahead with the lease to own on the Motorola in-car camera systems.
Chief, thank you. Any questions for? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mayor, sir, I ask that we approve this request stated by chief.
Second.
I mean, chief, I'm sorry.
I have a second. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Chief, thank you. Item, my eyes are terrible, item C, I believe, consideration of bids for a compressed air cascade system for the Valdosta Fire Department. Another chief will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
We're coming tonight, ask permission to proceed with the purchase of a cascade system. This is a compressed air system located at Station 2. Current system we have now is more than 25 years old. So this system is what fills up the tanks that we approved a week or so ago, a couple weeks ago. And so we put this out for bid. All the companies did meet specs, the low bid come in from B&amp;T Enterprises at $55,990. Is currently in SPOS 8, estimated cost at $75,000. So the low bid of $55,990, actually $19,010 under what we originally thought was going to cost. So our recommendation is that we proceed and award B&amp;T Enterprises.
Any questions for chief? He saved his money. Thank you, B&amp;T, and thank you, chief. No questions, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, sir, I ask that you approve this request stated by chief.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, show of hands. Thank you. Councilman Gibbs, there you go. It's unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to item six, boards, commissions, authorities, and advisory committees. A, consideration for the selection of a third member to serve on the Ethics Complaint Board. Our city manager, Mark Barber, will present.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. Again, before you, as I have in the last few meetings, to discuss our ethics board and the selection of three members. Just to kind of, for everyone to remember what's going on, February 15th, our city clerk was delivered an ethics complaint. At our council meeting on February the 25th, council approved Mr. Robert Jefferson as one of the three committees as the council's appointee. Mayor Matheson's appointee was Mr. Jim Tuneson, and he was appointed at that time on February the 25th. On March the 11th, council meeting, Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Tuneson requested council to approve Judge Arthur McLean as their third member of the ethics board. As you recall, this third member is selected by the original two members, and they must be of a legal profession, and they must be in good standing with the state bar of Georgia. So that's the requirement for the third member. By majority vote, council did approve Judge McLean as the third member. As I emailed you last weekend, as in your agenda package, on March the 15th, Judge McLean sends a letter to myself and to each of you that states that due to a health problem, a health issue the week before, he just believes that he cannot serve in full capacity on this committee, so withdrew his name as a member of this ethics committee. March 16th, Mr. Jefferson and Mr. Tuneson submit a memo to Mayor and Council requesting the approval of Mr. Richard Shelton as the replacement for Judge McLean and the third member of the ethics committee.
Any question for Mark Barber, or any question for the other two members of the panel? Counsel? Hearing none, can I have a motion from council to approve the selection of Mr. Richard Shelton as the third member of the Ethics Complaint Board?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Second.
I have a second, all in favor, show of hands. Six, all in opposition, one. Thank you, counsel. We'll now move on to citizens to be heard. It's the portion of the meeting that we ask you to come forward, state your name and address, so that we may have that for the record. Our policy requires that you stay under three minutes so that others have a chance to be heard. Please direct all comments to council as a whole and do not attempt to engage individual members of council in debate. Do we have any citizens to be heard at this time? Hello, George?
George, Valdosta, 5004, Oak Drive, Valdosta, Georgia. Mr. Mayor and Council, I enjoyed the retreat. I enjoy all the retreats. I was kind of disappointed in the stats of the city and the package that I received in terms of blacks in leadership position in a city that is predominantly black. And I understand that we want the best qualified, most all of us want the best qualified, but we also have a history of what the best qualified means. I just wondered, as I was at the retreat, I was asking why none of you elected officials asked the question? What are you all doing vigorously to change those statistics and where you're going with them in terms of hiring more qualified blacks? I was disappointed that nobody asked that question. Because I'm concerned about how slow this city is moving forward, I want to request, and I will be requesting, a five-year rate and trend, how the progression hopefully is on the upswing in terms of finding qualified blacks to fill some of these leadership positions. My second point is, I received a call, I'm not going to identify what federal housing apartment these are, is. I got several calls from the ladies and a man about rats. Within six days, she trapped seven rats in her two-bedroom house, apartment. This is federally funded and a hip-hat. They also have to pay $15 every time the fire department comes, and they say that the smoke detectors, something is wrong with them, so when the fire department comes, they have to pay out money. They talk about not being able to get their refrigerator repaired, their apartment painted. I'm going to do further homework on that, and I will be getting back with you all on that, but I just want the people to know that there was a time when you could call your local news outlets, and they would come and publish the problem that you had, but it seemed like those days are long gone. But let us thank God for the get-to free press, because I intend to continue what I do.
George, thank you. Are there any other citizens to be heard at this time?
My name is Gracie Bacon. I live at 708 Holly Drive, Valdosta. I live on Holly Drive, and nothing has improved on Holly Drive. Somehow or another, and I don't know how, this council got hung up on parking. I didn't come to you for parking, because all the people on my street have a paid parking lot. If you look at the street, you will see it. So I don't think that I would have called the governor, the sheriff, knock harder to division, the police, Mr. Barber, community representative, I wouldn't have called them about parking. And when I went to the planning meeting down there on Savannah Alley, the woman said to me, "Miss Bacon, you are not talking about parking." I said, "No." She said, "It's just a symptom of the problem. The parking down there is not the problem, it's just a symptom, just like losing the taste or smell with COVID. It's just a symptom, it's not COVID. It's a symptom that you had it. The parking down there is a symptom of a more serious problem than parking." And when I called everybody, I don't know why this council got hung up on parking. I promise you, I wasn't talking about parking, I was talking about illegal activity. Those people, we got a straight junkyard on Holly Drive, and it comes in all the time. At 11 o'clock at night, we won't be asleep like you will, because we're going to have to hear all those cars, and somebody ripping up their motors at 11 o'clock, and nobody's going to stop it, call the police, call whoever, they're not going to stop it because it's on Holly Drive. But I promise you, I was not talking about parking, because everybody on Holly Drive has a parking area. And I don't say everybody use it, but they do have it. So don't come up here talking about parking. You talk about illegal activities. You talk about how much traffic is on that street. You talk about trying to get through on the street. But please don't talk to me about parking, because every parent's stupid of me to call the FBI and the GBI about parking. I wasn't talking about parking, and I don't think the GBI or the FBI will come to Valdosta about parking. So I wasn't calling about that. I was calling about all the other stuff, the unsafe practices, the pollution, the wrong kind of activities on the street. But don't put it to park, that was a cop-out for you all. Sorry, cop-out, but things on Holly Drive is just like cancer. It spreads if it's not addressed, and you letting that cancer spread because they might wear that clothing.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon. Is there any other citizens to be heard at this time? We'll move on now to the city manager's report. Mark Barber returns.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everyone that Department Health is holding another drive-through vaccination clinic at the Civic Center this upcoming Tuesday, it'll be March 30th, from noon to 7:00 PM. You must call to register to get an appointment, and as it is now, anyone 18 years or older is now eligible for that vaccination, so we'll continue to urge our community to take part in those events. But again, it's Tuesday, March 30th, from noon to 7:00 PM at the Lounge County Civic Center, and it will be the Johnson &amp; Johnson Vaccination. We want to remind everybody that Main Street staff will host a downtown egg hunt, starting Monday, March 29th to Friday, April the 2nd. How this will work is that each day of the week, an egg will be hidden in one of the mini-shops in our beautiful downtown Valdosta. Egg hunt participants can look at the daily clues that have been posted downtown, Valdosta social media, the website, things of that nature, to look for the clues. Once found, then the egg can be turned over for downtown dollars, and which can be used at our participating restaurants and some of our many shops downtown. So it's just an adult, that's Easter egg hunt is really what it is, but I guess kids can hunt too if they wanted to, Ellen, I don't know. But anyway, that starts Monday, March 29th, and lasts the whole week through April the 2nd. It's always a fun event. For those of you, and I think there perhaps are three, that are participating in the Ag Day tomorrow, your schedule should be in front of you for tomorrow's tour. You start at 9:00 out here at the parking lot in the judicial, well, the judicial complex parking lot is where they'll pick you up at. But your schedule should be in front of you. If not, let us know, and we'll make sure you have it. Okay? Also, lastly, just want to let you know that a team of assessors from Kalia, Kalia as you know is our police accreditation organization, they will be examining, looking at, assessing the Valdosta Police Department virtually, beginning on April the 5th. They will have, conduct interviews with employees, staff members, things of this nature. Previously, they had done the assessment virtually, where they actually go into our police department's software server, and they extract approximately 80 files, and they look at them, and they assess them, they look for things such as, are we doing what we're saying we're doing, things of that nature. And I'm happy to report that out of that assessment, there were no findings at all found with those 80 files that they chose, approximately 80 files. So this is the next part of the assessment where they virtually interview personnel. April the 6th is the third part of the assessment where there's going to be a public hearing or a public information session at City Hall Annex, it'll be, again, April 6th at 5:30. The assessment staff will be presenting virtually, so folks that want to come out and talk about our police department, they do so at that point in time. Assessors will be able to answer questions. If you can't make it, we ask, please send letters, emails to myself or Chief Mannahan, and we'll make sure all that gets to the assessors. But again, I think that's a very important public information session, April 6th at 5:30 in the City Hall Annex. That's it, Mayor.
Mark, thank you very much. And we'll move on to council comments, and I'd like to lead off council comments by, again, thanking our council and our city staff for a fantastic retreat. I think everybody walked out of there inspired and invigorated and realizing that we're all rowing the boat in the same direction, truly. And thank you all very much. One other thing, you've got an invitation to Wild Adventures, celebrating their 25th anniversary and the opening of the Liberty Farms Petting Zoo. The governor will be there. It had 11 o'clock on the invitation, they've asked that now we get out there and get seated by 10:30. get seated by ten-thirty, because I believe the governor has multiple stops, so if everybody would make that program note to change. And one last thing, I received a letter, and I believe Councilman Vickers might have as well, Mr. Abner Smith, we received back in October of 2020. He was a retired, um, Army veteran, and somebody that worked in government service and had come back to this area and was disappointed in the state that, uh, Scott Park was in at the time. Um, after he reached out to us, he saw, um, rapid improvements being made to it, um, was told about the plan for the rest of, of the improvements at Scott Park, and followed up with a letter saying, "I pray this letter reaches, um, both of you," and again, Councilman Vickers and myself, "is only proper if you make a complaint, that once the complaint's been answered, you respond with 'thank you.'" So again, Mr. Abner Smith wanted to tell us all, "Thank you." City staff as well, "Thank you for a, a job well done out at Scott Park," and continued improvements as well to our city parks. Counsel, I'll, I'll turn it over for council comments. Andy, you wanna start?
I don't have any.
Councilman Gibbs? Councilman Cody?
You know, I got several. Uh, on the egg hunt, I, I'm, I'm very grateful we doing it, very grateful that we doing it for the adults, but could we do something over there at our, uh, location across the street here, like a, like a kids' egg hunt? Because a lot of our kids be in school, and if we could do an egg hunt for the parents to come out, I'm, just something to think about, not-
We'll look at that, I think that's a good idea, but, you know, Parks is correct, and they're the big, they're, they're usually the ones that sponsor that, but, uh, so maybe somebody can work something in conjunction with them, perhaps.
Okay. Now, uh, we have quite a few churches, African-American churches, that have opened up for the COVID-19 vaccination. Thursday, April the eighth, New Hope Missionary Baptist Church, seven oh nine West Gordon Street, will be from four PM to six-thirty PM. Uh, Friday, April the ninth, Morning Star Missionary Baptist Church, ten fifty-one Howard Road, from nine AM to eleven-thirty AM. Friday, again, Mac Cavery Baptist Church, thirty-eight, thirty-five, Whitewater Road, will be giving vaccination from one-thirty PM until four PM. That Saturday, April the tenth, Greater Pleasant Temple Baptist Church, three oh nine Cherry Street, from nine AM until eleven-thirty AM. Saturday, again, Mac Cavery Baptist Church, five hundred East Fourth Street, one PM until three PM. We are really trying to promote our African-American people to come out and get this vaccine. Not saying, not saying that, uh, no one else need to get the vaccine, but speaking from what is needed in the state of Georgia, African-Americans are the ones that are not going out and get the vaccine. Why, I can't say. Uh, the Tuskegee is one of our hang-up. I'm asking Mr. Barber and our leaderships here to help us get this promoted to our African-Americans that really did need to get out and get these vaccines. I have done everything I can think of to promote this in our area and surrounding areas. Again, we need help from the city councilmen, everybody here at the city that help us promote our African-Americans, especially our seniors. We got seniors in their nineties that will not take this shot, and they are at risk because they have grandchildren that's coming in and out of their doors, and you know, grandmama don't say no to anyone that come at their door. So again, we ask you to pray for us for wisdom, that we could come with some solution to help our citizens within Lowndes County and the city of Valdosta. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Norton? None. Tim Carroll? None. Ms. Stewley?
Well, I, I will like to take this moment to just make a little comment, and I just have to do this because I've had, uh, quite a few people talking about that parking overlay. Well, I think a lot of people were very much misinformed about the purpose of the consideration for getting a parking overlay. It was not to clean up one individual area, it was to clean up a community area. It is to help the community to do better. The, the purp- the purpose of it was so that we could get people involved in cleaning your own areas up, and I've heard a lot of people saying that we, uh, mainly got that project just to satisfy one person. That is completely untrue. We wanna make the community look air, uh, look better. Um, as a project, as I did want that, and I look at a lot of things over there in that area. We still need it, and I'm still gonna fight to try to do things to get the streets looking better, to get the people to try to clean their area up instead of having a lot of, whatever, cars and, uh, well, they have a lot of things just laying all around, to make it look better. Once you start helping yourself, then others will help you, but it starts from beginning, from, from yourself first, and that was the purpose of getting the parking overlay, not to enforce the law to take care of a project for one particular person. That was never, never the concept of trying to get something done, and it is so much misinformation out there, that is why a lot of things don't get done. People sometime do a lot to themselves, but no, it was a, a project to get the area looking better. I will continue to go around finding areas that need some work to be done, and I will continue to try to find projects for them. I'm so sorry a lot of people got that misunderstanding, but they were wrong, and I'm just taking this time now to say that, because it has come back many times, that we went at it the wrong way. You got the misunderstanding, you got the wrong understanding of why, of what was being done, and that's it.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Vickers? Councilman, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, entertain a motion to adjourn? He, he declined. It's back to you.
That's your motion, Mr. Uh-
Oh, may I make a motion that we are dismissed?
Second. All in favor, thank you.